It's the City, City of Utica Common Council, we need the whole meeting, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. There were seven items in committee, but we are going to concentrate on two items, which is a proposed ordinance number three, a bond ordinance, as well as proposed ordinance number five, another bond ordinance. So we'll start out with proposed ordinance number three. It's a bond ordinance authorizing issuance of one point, one million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars of serial bonds from City of Utica, Oneida County, New York, to finance the cost of certain capital projects. We went through this the last meeting. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that it's going to be four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that we're going to be, I guess we bonded a couple of years ago for bleachers at the Sal Longo Field, and that no longer is going to be in existence. So, we want to rebond for the four seventy, as well as six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for some parking areas that include, not including sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drainage, and landscaping. So, I understand there's a, there's a donor as well, that's going to donate some money to help out with some of these projects, that they want to do within the park system. So does anybody have any questions, any council members regarding these two bonds? I know Councilman Beechus wanted to separate the two, and, but they're all in one right now. So, any questions?
No, I mean, I kind of understand what's going on.
Are we okay? The only question I have, Stephanie, is, um, I guess we're going to invest three hundred and something thousand dollars for a Little League field in Mark Carmelies and Proctor Park there. What is that, is that a description of what, what are they going to do for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars? They're fencing up, there's-
So the four hundred and seventy thousand, we had originally thought that the baseball field was going to come in at around five hundred. The lowest bidder on the job was three hundred and twenty-four thousand and eighty-eight dollars. That'll include the installation of a warning track with the sand sub base, an installation of a new scoreboard, and, um, uh, oh, I'm sorry, that's the alternates, forgive me. So the items that'll include is the demolition of the existing stuff that's not in compliance, the old poles, the old fence area, and they will, will do proper drainage on the field to have everything subsurface level if in the event someone decides in the future to do the all-inclusive for turf. So all the subgrade will be prepped and ready. We'll have the, the fence installed properly, so that way it's in compliant, because right now with the way the dugouts are laid out, the fence connect the wrong way. So it'll all be new fence, it'll have the asphalt underneath the fence, so that way there'll be no more maintenance with weed whacking, they could mow it a lot easier.
Yeah, I've walked that park and there's always weeds all over the place.
There'll be a coaches box, they'll have the new, um, mark-o-clay, the new bases.
That's for the infield, and then they're going to have a warning track as well?
Yep.
Which is made up, usually it was old stone dust there, and the kids would get hurt when they slide. So this will be something sort of softer material.
Alternates that are on here would add some items, but given the base scope of work, it would be sod, new, new infield, new fencing, demolition of the poles, because the lights actually cost a lot of money to run, they're not even, what Dave had said, they've, they're not, they don't turn them on anymore, they're not efficient.
They're not up to standard, you can't use them for baseball.
Yeah, you can't use them, so it's really just to clean up the area. We had done ADA compliance work there now, including the excess road, and, and as you all know, the splash pad and the playground and the skate park.
Yeah, it's all in session.
Yes, and, and we also have a, um, multiple phases coming for other ADA compliance, which includes the field house. So with the work in this project for the three hundred and twenty-four thousand, not only is it mitigating those improvements at, inside the baseball field for the sport, but it will also have proper concrete pads, walkways, ADA accessibility for the field house and the other walking paths in the area.
Sounds good. And I know-
The remaining hundred and twelve thousand was, we were hoping to, well, there's also a hundred and twelve thousand that would be able to do the interior restoration of the skate park for the rubber, because right now the project did not include any interior restoration, and they, we see a concern of having grass put in there to have more maintenance, then the lawn clippings will then have, affect the concrete, stone would cause a trip hazard. So the rubber is a safe place for them to continue to practice on their tricks while still being a safe area with no maintenance, long-term.
Anything within that-
Just in the interior.
Yeah, the skate park.
So parks doesn't have to go in there and cut it, safer for the skaters, and we got this idea from the skaters.
Right.
Um, wasn't part of the original plan, but when there was a balance between what we thought the bond was going to cost, what the amount for the Sal Longo bleachers was, um, we thought that this would be a good way to, to, to make the two amounts simpatical.
Yeah, I just want to, I just have another question. Did you ever consider just temporary smaller bleachers where you buy a certain section, you can actually pick it up and move it? Maybe on that other side of the field, maybe in the future?
For Sal Longo?
Yeah, because-
Yeah, so the, the-
Because when the parents do come, they're, they're way over here, their kids are on the other side of the field, the visiting team, whatever it may be. They have a little more access to it.
And you could put smaller bleachers there. The issue, there was, there was two issues that came up with the Sal Longo bleachers. Number one, for the events that are happening there now, this could change in the future, and maybe if you build it, they will come. For the events that are happening now, the bleachers that they have now aren't to full capacity.
I know.
So, so we're going to spend four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to put more bleachers in, when there's plenty of room in the current bleachers.
Correct.
But second of all, they would be a long call veraf, right? So the actual seeing of the field-
Yep.
And the, the aesthetics of the field would be blocked by them. So, um, this is, again, um, to recap the conversation that we had the other day, um, we had every intention of pulling the bleachers and doing the bleachers. Um, you know, there was procurement issues at first, and then, but we had solved those. The mayor asked us to look at, how do we make the baseball field nicer? Because he thought the corridor started to look nice, and the baseball field looked overgrown and neglected, and he thought that it should look in concert with the rest of the improvements we made with the park. Um, so that's for it.
All right. Go ahead, Councilman Beechers.
Couple, couple things, were you next, you want to go? So, couple things. So you just mentioned the bleachers at Sal Longo's field you don't want to put in because you're not getting capacity. But yet, and I understand the whole deal, yet you guys want to spend three hundred thousand dollars on a field. You mentioned the word turf that we-
No, sod, sod.
Okay, you said down the road for drainage, they may want to put all-purpose turf in. But my problem here is, there's no, we're going to spend this money on a field that nobody's going to use. We're not using that field. And you mentioned before that your father wanted to see us putting back into the city. If you wanted to do anything, if you wanted to go for that bond, make, put a hundred thousand dollars into that field, like I asked you, make it an all-purpose field, because that's not a baseball field, it's a skate park, it's a picnic area. Make a backstop with grass that people can use. Take the other two hundred thousand, along with the money that he's given, and make, put, put turf in North Utica, make it all, a whole beautiful field. Or don't bond at all. Let me ask you this question, when did the, I don't believe I was on a council if, in four years, that we approved bleachers for Sal Longo. I believe that was probably before my time, or am I wrong?
No, I think that was last year, last fiscal year.
Okay.
Capital for both.
It was quite a bit, it was a really large capital project, but it was in there, yeah.
Okay, oh, it was in a capital, it was in a capital project, okay, okay, it was, okay. So my, and my next, my next question is, that bond ordinance has been sitting there. There's nobody that says we got to spend it.
Right.
Right? We don't got to spend it. We're not going to be spiteful and just say, okay, we don't do this, we're going to go put bleachers in we don't need. We're going through all this, right now, you're going through a change of administrations. We don't really know what's going on. It's two weeks before the end of the year, and we're going to bond for-
We, we put-
And I get it, I know that it was a, a change of, you know, you got a good price, because it's the end of the year. I get, I, I just don't understand. You, you guys have been told numerous times by the baseball officials that they don't want that park there, they don't use it.
But let me, um, so, so let me just, and, and you're right, I mean, some of this is a matter of opinion, that's why there's a council, a council vote. I can just tell you from the administrative perspective, um, the administration's perspective, um, how we address some of those concerns that you have. So one, it was, okay, without adding to the debt load, um, you're, you're, you, you have approved that. So use the approved debt to make some of the improvements you want to see. See, we did meet with Little League, we did meet with you, we did meet with Mike, and there was a desire to do North Utica. The mayor wanted to do East Utica, because he thought it, it stuck, stuck, stuck out like a sore thumb in Proctor, and keeping the bond in Proctor Park, um, is what he wanted to see done. We found a way to improve more than one thing in Proctor Park, the field could be used. Um, it's sometime in the future, for Little League, but for other purposes, it could be kickball, it could be special games, it could be families, right? What's, what's the point of having something there that can't be used, right? And we found a solution for North Utica and Hinko and South Utica. So we really tried to take all concerns into account, and we will have solved the problem on three fields without increasing the debt load. That was the way we looked at it.
Three hundred and twenty-four thousand.
And, and the price was a lot better than we thought it was going to be. I mean, they, they came in with a good price because of the timing of the year.
Change orders, everything else that pops in on that, so.
This one is an all-inclusive lump sum, they were itemized, everything they're responsible for. So they're, this, the splash pad and the slide should all not have any change orders because of the way it's written, it's a lump sum. They are taking ownership of that, if there's something that comes up, they, they know what we want.
But the slide, is it, I don't think it, I mean, it went out there, but I don't think anyone jumped on it.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, there was a-
And that's the difficult thing, it's, it's tough to get bidders on these projects that are, that are, what she's saying, all-inclusive, because they basically accept the liability of change orders. But we got bids on all of this, and we got a bid on the slide.
But we haven't, we haven't approved it.
What, um, no, no, he's talking about contract and supply. I don't know where it is on contract and supply, I know we got a good bid.
I think it might, I think it is done, because I just had my pre-construction meeting today, and that means they awarded the job at least a month or two ago. So I don't know if it was, Jay weren't here.
What was the total cost for the slide?
One, point four.
One point four.
Now, who's Daniel?
Slide, you don't have to do anything.
Not, not to bring it to a whole nother tangent, I was just trying to indicate that there are projects that are lump sum, that are successfully, successfully completed without change orders. Most of the change orders are usually when there's unit prices, and then the quantities end up going over. And in this situation, there are no unit prices or items for quantities to affect the price.
And if we cancel those projects, who happens?
If you cancel which projects?
The projects they haven't started yet.
The projects haven't started yet.
Oh, the projects, um, you'd probably have to, we'd probably have to pay for all the material that had been ordered, because submittals have already been sent in, and I don't know the rule in the contract, I'll have to look.
If a contract was awarded, you're breaking the contract. So there's going to be penalties, fees, and costs to breaking the contract.
They just awarded the contract though last week?
Which project?
In contract and supply?
The slide?
For the parks and the slide?
The what?
Because there was nothing on the agenda for the parks at two meetings ago, so it had to be at the last meeting, for the slide.
The slide was board, I mean-
I don't know what contract and supply process was.
That was like November.
My understanding is that it's been awarded.
Right, so I guess it was a month ago. So I mean, if we're, we're spending again, money that probably shouldn't be spent on projects that probably shouldn't be done, knowing the financial situation that we're in now. So I guess a couple of questions that I have, Mark, would you mind if I jump in really quick?
Oh, you have, you have the floor.
Um, one was, where, because I have the bond schedules in front of us from two thousand twenty-three, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty-two, and there's nothing there for, um, for the Longo Field, for the bleachers. I've got machinery, machine apps, machinery apparatuses, building alterations, traffic, sewer.
That's the bond that just went out, it will not be on the schedule until next year, that's when we start bidding on it, twenty-four, twenty-five. And I did send those out.
So where is that?
It would be in the total, I sent it out, it should say, as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So the only thing that I got was the debt service schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five. I never received, there's nothing even on here.
It would say, it should say right on there.
So there's nothing on here for the twenty-four, twenty-five bond?
That's the ban, it's not a bond.
So where is the bond ordinance schedule? Hello?
I sent this, the current one, you're in here.
So where is that? I'm sorry.
It's that other schedule, and I did send the current one.
So where's the breakdown?
You don't have the current schedule, I don't know, I sent it out, I don't know.
No, I got the current schedule, this is the one I printed out from last year. So this is the current schedule that's up to five point four, but there's no breakdown of what we were bonding for.
Well, there would be a breakdown on it, I mean, that's in the ordinance.
Where's the ordinance though, that's what I'm asking.
I would have to go find it.
Can you get it, is there any possibility? Because the only two ordinance is that we have are the two point five for paving, and the one point two for, and the one point two for the parks. So I mean, that's, that's what I'm, guess I'm confused about, too. Parks Playgrounds, the original embellishment, recreational, to be not established at four hundred and seventy thousand, parking area is six hundred and fifty thousand, and the bond's one point one two.
That's this bond, you're, you're looking for the, the year that they passed the Sal Longo bleachers.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not.
What are you looking for?
This is the bond ordinance that just came down.
Yes.
It says Parks Playgrounds, it's four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yes, that's.
So what do you, what is that for then?
The four hundred and seventy thousand is for the, it is the equivalent dollar amount of what the bleachers were, but a new ban for the baseball of three hundred and twenty-four thousand with the warning field track of twenty-nine thousand, and the skate park rubber in, interior restoration to equal four hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two together.
So I guess then that's where I'm confused about, where you're saying that you bonded for the bleachers, the original amount. Where is that then?
I believe it was in June.
Right, so it's not on here, is what I'm saying.
That's what you're asking for, that's what she's going to get, what, when did you?
But you just said it was for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I know, I know why it's not, it wouldn't be on there. I think it's approval to do it, but they've never pulled the money, which means it wouldn't be shown.
Right, so that's what I'm asking, so where was it on the schedule? Because there's no such, there's nothing-
E and A approved it on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, it says, and I didn't open the ordinance yet, but it says, uh, uh, it was with a whole-
Bunch of stuff, it was a nine-million-dollar project?
Yeah.
Pretty sure it was like-
So it was the capital, it was, it was when you guys voted on capital for twenty twenty, twenty twenty?
Right, but that's what I'm saying, so according to this, so where is it?
Bleachers.
Where is it?
I just said in the-
I know, I can't hear you, because you're, first of all, you're not facing me, so I can't project you, yes.
June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Can you send that, so we can, so that's an E and A approval?
Can someone ask for this stuff, so we're not looking for it in the middle of a meeting?
I concur, all this stuff can be good given to you guys in our next meeting, but Samantha wants to give you a basis so she can get all this done. Don't get me wrong, you guys can have time, this is not, this is not-
But I thought that this was, this meeting was for, like-
No, but I think that's what Diana went to go get.
Get you that information.
Is it what Diana went to go get?
Right, and that's what, that's all I'm asking, and, and that's a board of E and A transfer, that, what does that have to do with the bond ordinance, is what I'm saying.
I understand, you can get that, all that list, all the information, just to ask-
But she never took the money.
I get that, so then what are you telling me that you're bonding for in twenty-four, twenty-five? Because that's what, that's what Diana just said.
Okay, we're trying to say we will not ban for the four hundred and seventy of bleachers that you've already approved, and we're asking you to create a new four hundred and seventy thousand dollar ban to do the East Utica, or the East Utica baseball and the skate, skate park improvements.
Right, so you're not going to do the bleachers.
Right, if this is approved, we are not using the four seventy for the-
You're going to use it for the others.
Right.
Right, so again, so for a baseball field that we don't need an East Utica and things like that, I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of what we have to break down. And then, and then on top of the fact is that I'm asking to be, I'm asking to bond for close to three point five million dollars, three points, three point six million dollars right now, and the bond schedule that I have here for the total band impact is two point five two million dollars. And according to the bond ordinance that we were given, it was five point four. So again, that's an extra of one point three million dollars over than what we have for the twenty-four, twenty-five schedule. That has to be explained. Because that's an extra one point three million dollars towards our budget next year that we don't have projected for that. On top of the fact that we have overages on paving, which is another issue that violates our, violates the city charter, you know what I mean? I mean, so there's.
Let, let, let me just say about this four hundred and seventy thousand. If we don't approve this bond. Then what do you wanna do with that parcel? What do you wanna do with that field? You wanna just knock it down? You wanna just keep the backstop up and take all the fencing down and take down the, uh, you know, what do you do with it? It's gonna be sitting there.
Frank.
And if we don't improve it, improve, improve the field, then it's gonna be an eyesore, like they said. But if, if we, if we're gonna do something, let's bond for it. Or if we just wipe it out and put a pavilion there and spend the money that way. I don't know.
So we just, we just hit a baseball meeting on last Monday, um, to discuss this, um, what, what our plans were for, for baseball. Um, we did not use the Little League field in East Utica.
From outside the city command.
Yeah, be, because the field is not playable. The field's not playable. The, the field, the field that, right, but here's another thing, so like. You have parents that have other kids on other teams. That was why the impact to have it in the North Utica field, because there is three fields. It's accessible to parents that have multiple children playing multiple, on multiple teams. Therefore, they could go to Field One when their one son's playing, or Field Two when their daughter's playing. You know, in conjunction of the fact that we're trying to also, you know, possibly start softball for Little League as well, under the same umbrella. With that said, we don't use South Utica, cause the field's not playable. So we put sidewalks into a field that you can't use, because. Number one, people use it as a dog park, and number two, um.
They use the North Utica ones for dog pets, too.
Yeah, I mean, but at least we've been locking the gates in North Utica and stuff like that, too. I mean, which is, the ones behind Chinatrees.
Hinko.
That's for the older kids to go on.
No, that's for, that's for Little League.
He's talking about the old Little, he's talking about the old Little League and softball fields.
Right, that we just put new sidewalks in to get there, that we can't use.
In fairness, we had to, we were under.
There was a loss.
Right, for, for what? I mean, to where? You might as well, you can't even use the fields. I mean, if you send a kid in that outfield, there's ditch, there's holes, there's grounds, there's everything.
But it's a court, it was a court.
Sounds like, feels my understanding, why don't you get a letter from the president to thank for raising the council?
I think, but Frank, with all due respect, I think that's why we were just kinda waiting a couple more weeks until a new administration's there, you know? So I think that that's part of the.
Yeah, I think Michael Gentile's gonna be in the right position for it to do this, but, um, first thing, just to share with your colleagues that information. All you need is a signed letter, president, you guys had a meeting, and you just, we don't, we don't utilize these fields, so there's no sense.
I think that that was what was said.
But to Joe Beatrice's point, it's an all-purpose field. I think we're all getting caught up on the, the Little League.
We're getting caught up now, after I brought it up, after, for six weeks, I've been telling you, don't put three hundred thousand into it. Make it like a nice, when you go to a picnic area, there's a field where the kids can go play kickball or something. Three hundred thousand into a field that nobody's gonna use?
So, so, so telling you, so I'll tell you, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, um, I'll say three things about that, and it's not. Again, everybody can draw their own conclusion, but it's not like, I just don't want anybody to believe that these weren't things that were considered, okay? And, and so, one thing is, um, the North Utica, that's where, um, you know, the mayor felt strongly, the administration, the mayor. Felt strongly about doing East Utica because of the work that's been in the Proctor. Little League always said, North Utica, right? Um, that's what Little League said, so we're conceding that. So whether she gets a signed letter or not, that's what they told us. That's why, right, we sought the private donor and a solution so that we can take care of both things. And the private donor's contingency was, if the city puts in this much money, I'll put in this much.
And to give some context, it's not just like this came out of the dark. My dad, for the la- last year and a half, has been wanting to, to rename and do Steve Price. And then everyone, or not Steve, not Steve, what's it, Jack Price, sorry, Jack Price Field.
That was Steve's brother.
Steph, can I ask you one question? Can I just ask, in just my opinion, I think it's awesome what your dad's doing. And he's a very smart businessman, he's very smart and cares about the community. Do you think he'd wanna put three hundred thousand in a field that nobody can use? Or would he rather say?
He's doing it into, he's doing the, the North Utica.
But what he's saying, he'd like to see us put other money into other parks.
And so he was going to put it in Jack Price, and that's what he asked.
Well, you don't use that field either, right?
And that was why the administration said, we're not gonna do it. Six months later, I asked him in this June. What about the field at, in East Utica? And that was the same concept.
I, I, I think that we're even, I, I gotta be honest with you, I mean, we're talking. About information that's, that's a gift, number one, that should probably. Be left at that. I mean, that's, you kinda, kinda gotta work your kinks out. I mean, we're anticipating money that we haven't had or received yet. So I think that that's kind of something that, I mean, I don't wanna publicly state that, that's something that the administration's gonna have to work out. No matter what, at the end of the day. I mean, but I can't be doing one thing to do the other. Do you get what I'm saying?
He wants to do the North Utica.
Do you get what I'm saying? So my whole thing is, is that whatever donation amount, the money that we're borrowing for that. From what I was told, was triple times that amount.
I get it, but what I, my, my point that I'm trying to make is, he wants to see the city invest. Wouldn't he rather see him invest into a park?
I think the way that he sees it, I think the way that he sees it, from the information that has been shared to him, is that Button Sean's doing the hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Hinko field.
She's doing eighty, and we're getting forty for North Utica.
Oh, okay, a hun, collectively, a hundred and twenty-five thousand towards the investment of baseball. He's interested in doing it to honor my grandfather, because he's a longtime resident of North Utica. That's his portion of two fifty, was what we've come up with at, at cost prices external from what city cost would be. So to him, he's saying, why can't the city also put in a match? He doesn't care where it is, but he's like, you have North Utica, you have South Utica. Okay, there's probably nothing in West Utica, so why can't the city put some money into East Utica? So that way now every kid in the city can have a place to play catch, have bases, and have that situated, situated setup. That's it. He, he's not fully concerned with baseball being a, a, a sport that the fields are there, but rather. You have other outside money coming in that he would like to see the same amount being invested. Just so that way, across the board, baseball in every district is accessible, that.
And the last thing is, when we spoke about with Little League, just so you know, I just wanted to address two things. So, so the. The administrative feeling was, okay, we got a solution for North Utica, we got improvements in South Utica. The East Utica was important to the mayor because of all the money that we invested in the park, he thought it stuck out like a sore thumb. And the only purpose of a baseball field isn't to host the Little League, right? You could host Little League, Little League evolves in location, I played in East Utica, right? And then, you know, who knows ten years from now, five years from now, right? So, and that, yeah, right, so that changes, right? Used to play at O'Conner's. So Little League does change. They say it's never changed, it's the plan for the next ten years. Well, you don't know. But the second thing is, so it could eventually host Little League, or it could host some championship games. But people can play in a baseball field without being part of Little League. You can have a practice there. A father can go play catch with his kid. You can kickball, should it look overgrown and neglected in Proctor Park.
But here's the thing, then you're putting money towards a field that a league actually uses. First of all, it's not even called Mont Carmel Little League anymore, so that, that's. I mean, there's no such thing as Mont Carmel, I know, but I'm just saying, but that's what it's named now, there's no such thing as Mont Carmel Little League anymore, it's technically Utica Little League.
Yeah, it's technically Utica.
You know what I mean? So that's, that's here and there. I'm just saying is that if you're investing that, there's a lot more that could be done into those three fields in North Utica. On top of, on top of that. I mean, you could just put grass in that field, take the fence away, make it easy so that D P W could mow that, and I think that that's kind of the. Idea that we were, that we were getting, that we were getting.
And that's what the council's gonna do. Now, one thing that you do get out of it, though, and something else to think of, and you could, you get the ADA stuff and the accessibility. But you also get the drainage, right? Because in that field, as well as in the softball field, there's puddles that saturate that area of Proctor Park. Anybody that's been there, the water sits there. So the, the expense, and the reason it's so expensive. Is to implement the drainage program, so that part of the park isn't underwater. So whether there was a baseball field or not, the drainage is still beneficial.
We did the same thing for the disco. That whole area was all a swamp, they couldn't mow it. So while they were in there, they did the proper drainage, and now it's mowable and dry.
All right, I think we've, I, we've covered this subject. It's gonna come to a vote, whatever you decide to do, you know, on the twentieth, that's, that's what we'll do.
Do we need to touch base on the?
One, one last thing on this. Can we split this up and work on the paving, then it's a major thing up at, on the paving, the parking lot, and value view? And hold this until a little bit afterward, so we see a little bit what's going on in January, February? You're not gonna do any of this work now anyways.
The only caveat is, you could solve, you can, you can, you can do that, right, Joe? And, um, I'm sorry, Councilman Beatrice. No, but I'm saying, you can do that. I'm just telling you, I just wanna give you the information. You can do it, right? And then you can say, okay, I wanna ask Bound Council if we can separate these or do these as two different projects, vote one up, vote down. You're going to end up paying more per, per project.
And we'll have to put all these back out together.
We gotta put them back out to bid, you're gonna pay more per project, and you can't guarantee the start of construction season. Because now they're bidding in February as opposed to November.
It doesn't make a difference for Little League, though, whether that field's done or not.
A hundred percent.
You know what I'm saying? So that's, that's kind of what you gotta go back on.
No, but I, what I'm saying is the separation will affect the parking lot, too.
It's gonna be more money per project.
Per project.
I, I gotta be honest with you, first of all, I, I, the, the Longo project has exceeded like three million dollars on top of what the original allocation was for. Um, two million if you include what sales putting in, so like a seven million dollar total project that has cost the city now. Um, which will, will, in my personal opinion, will never, it's what? I'm sorry, Dana?
Oh, I'm.
Oh, was, oh, I thought you said.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Oh, I had, I had said.
Five thirty, that's why I just don't have.
Oh, okay, I thought you said it was over fi, over five. Oh, okay. Um, so that's, that's kind of, you, you know, a big thing. You're invested all this money, you need parking spaces, and from the original start, when they took out the trees and added the parking spaces on the top, you can't, there's no place for golf carts. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's gotta be done, and I, I, as much as it pains me to have to borrow additional money, which I wish we could find some ARPA funding in addition to that. Which, that's a whole other thing. I think that until we actually, I, I, of two weeks is not gonna uphold this project. That's just my, that's just my opinion, to get, to get a, a new administration in there and figure this out.
But you're not, yeah, and you can go with the new administration, but you're talking about if you go past when they put it out and when the period is to, to accept that.
Did you say sixty days?
It's sixty days.
I don't know if it's sixty.
Sixty days, right, that's what they said.
And, yeah, and we weren't clear if it was sixty or thirty, but we think it's sixty, right? Um, cause I think stuff like that. Right, but, but either way, you're over the limit, right? So if you go past the sixty days on those original bids for that, it's not two weeks, it's putting it back out to bid, it's accepting new bids, and it's new construction schedule. So that's fine, if that's what you wanna do. I just wanna let you know that.
Well, we wouldn't be past that sixty days by waiting for January first.
And the parking lot, it's the National Grid Service, they're waiting for a contractor to know what they're doing for that.
Yes, that's, that's the big, that's the biggie right there.
To coordinate it.
Right.
So Mr. Longo can get started, at least have a planned date where he could.
And he, he just signed it, because we had to put the, the parking lot in there.
Right, and the RFP is gonna have to go out for at least six weeks, and it's gotta be created. Now, so, so, so you're talking months. And so there's no construction coordination, and seldom sign the contract until you get the park.
So I guess then it goes back to, why can't you just use that, reallocate the two, four hundred and seventy thousand from the original bond ordinance from twenty-two?
We can't redo it.
They won't let you amend the bond ordinance?
No, no.
It's only allocated for the bleachers.
We asked Bond Council twice.
It's for a different, um.
It's for a different purpose.
That's, that's what I'm saying, with this whole thing where.
I mean, then, then, can somebody give me an opinion?
I bet you it's a better rate back then, too.
I'm pretty sure that we've amended bond ordinances before. Oh, cause they rolled it over already? Okay, all right, well, that makes sense.
So, the whole thing is, when we're talking about this, it looks like all of us at this table, or the five of us, all agree that you gotta do value view.
But I think that we should just, I need an update on ARPA funding, soon, I mean, if, there's money left over for ARPA funding.
What I'm saying is, you gotta do, you gotta do value view.
I mean, maybe not go out again for, why are we doing?
We're trying to find as much of the money that is as possible.
Why, I know, but why are we going out for slides for one point four million, haven't started that project, and now bonding for one point two million on top of that?
Man, I'd almost like to know, I'd almost like to get an attorney involved and know when we just approved the waterslide park, or waterslide. And you're gonna tell me that the contract just got approved, and we're gonna have to pay for the supplies and.
But that's not the whole thing. You wanna speak about the waterslide, then let's, let's go, because this, this is a, this is a years-long process. Yeah, that, that's what I'm telling you, I'm not saying it.
And let's not forget that.
This is a years-long process, right, that now is coming to culmination of where you see. So the first thing with the waterslide that we had to do was hire an engineer. That's licensed to do these types of things in New York State. We, right, so, so we got Weston Sampson to do it.
The splash pad and the.
And they designed it, he's paid, right? So, so we paid for soft services, so that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, right? And then, the second thing, the slides are custom, based on design. So we ordered the slides, paid for the slides. So the slides themselves are paid for, right? So now, it's the apparatuses, the plumbing, the contractor, right? So we've, we're already seven hundred thousand dollars into this process.
And here's the problem that I have, though. So again, the council was never involved in any type of discussion, never any approval for any ARPA funding, okay? And now it's gonna be my responsibility to bond for additional money for projects that have gone overboard on, through, through the ARPA funding. So my whole thing is, is take this bond, bring it back, okay, and figure out where you are financially through your ARPA funding. And let that continue to be the responsibility of the mayor to find out where he's getting that money from, not us.
Okay, so for, for, for the record, right, the council was involved in allocations of ARPA funding, right? And, no, wait, let me say.
No, no, ever.
Two times, right? When we made transfers over fifteen thousand dollars, we brought it to the council, the, the council approved those transfers, right?
And corporation counsel, no timeout.
The first one was thirty million, I think. The first one was thirty million.
Right, right. And then the third time, right, when we brought it back to the council, the council said they didn't wanna be involved.
Right, because.
Right, and so then we got another decision from corporation counsel.
But corp, there's only on the transfers of funds, that wasn't through the allocation. And the corporation counsel agreed that we should have never approved any of those transfers, because if you look at the way our charter reads, and I'm not an attorney by any means, okay? So maybe somebody that has a little bit of knowledge on the way the law works should have read their city charter and said, hey, guess what? The council didn't approve any of those allocations of funds.
Okay, but to say the council, all I'm saying is, to say the council was never involved.
But we weren't, we weren't involved in any allocation. We were involved, we were involved in the transfer of funds. That is not in the allocation of the approval of any.
But the transfer of funds was the allocation, it was a transfer from a rental.
But it was not, but it was not, at all, at all.
Okay, just, let's, let's get back to ordinance number three.
Wait, just wait, one thing, Frank, just one thing. So basically, when we look at all this, I agree, if you hold it off. But if you, if what we're talking about right now, if you're gonna approve the paving that needs to be done. The money for the park, you already have that bond already there. You almost. Unless you could split them and say, don't do this and do that, which it sounds like you're not gonna be able to. I'm, I agree with you, wait till the new administration looks at it, but once you do one, you gotta be crazy not to do the other one. You already bonded for it, the money's sitting there.
I know, but that's, it's still extra money, and that goes back to, I guess, with the bond ordinance for the paving, is, is another explanation that's gonna have to be explained. Because according to this.
And that's what we're gonna deal with next.
Through, through the ban, and this was, this was something that I had asked for at the last council meeting. So for the ones that you sent down, the most recent one, for the twenty-four, twenty-five ban. It says that the total was five point four million for the payment towards the bond debt service.
All right, we're going into ordinance number five now, we're complete with number three.
My suggest, my suggestion would be for the one point two, would be to wait off until the new administration comes and kind of figure where we are financially.
Let's complete number three.
That's why, just your cost study in between, so you know what was spent on ARPA, what was spent on expenses, and where the project is. Also, a study where if we do say no, you guys do say no with the, with the contracts, which is all well and good. Then we usually, we should know the cost of saying no, okay? So all those numbers, all those numbers.
But you, you won't know that until it goes back out to bid, Frank.
That's true. We gotta wait for it to go back out to.
Well, you won't until you, still six weeks after the bid.
So at least, at least get some kind of cost study in each project to start with, so at least you guys got some background on how to go forward with each project.
All right, Councilman Williamson.
Part of that cost project is, how many people are we gonna need to hire to run that thing?
To run what?
The waterslide, cause you can't have two.
Three.
You sure?
Yeah, we had the Department of Health.
We had the Department of Health review it and tell us what we need.
And all the adults, how much are we gonna pay them? I mean, usually not kids, you're not paying.
It's just like the lifeguard. It's just like the lifeguard.
It's part of the lifeguard program.
So no security, no nothing?
No, three. They wanted one, cause Oneida County, so when you do a waterslide, just to be clear, that's why we had to hire, um, specialists.
Weston Sampson.
To Weston Sampson, because they're, they're, they're part of the permitting process, too. To get a permit, they have to agree with your staff workflow. And, and, and the youth bureau is involved in that, the Oneida County Department of Public Health is involved in that, and the engineer is involved in that. The whole, and I've told you guys this before, the whole rationale behind the waterslide is it is a more, is that our pools, three of the last four years, right? One of our pools was closed for a significant period of time in the summer. So it is a more efficient practice than a pool. A pool will take fifteen staff. A waterslide will take three. So while they're both open, you have an efficient, um, you have, you have three extra employees. No, while they're both open, you have three extra employees, right? So you can call in three more lifeguards. But if for some reason, like has happened three of the last four years, one of the pools closed, you can still run the waterslide, right? At significantly less cost than the pool.
Plus you're gonna have the splash pad.
And that happened during the COVID, the splash pad and the waterslide. So what happened in COVID is, the pool closed down, it's a hundred and twenty degrees.
I know, these poor kids didn't have any.
And they didn't have anything to do.
Okay, we're done discussion, uh, ordinance, discussing ordinance number three.
I would, I would suggest keeping committee until we figure out what we're doing.
Well, this is just committee meeting anyway, we can't do anything right now. And next is ordinance number five. Two point five million for the serial bonds, for the, uh, finance, the cost, I believe it's from twenty-two to twenty-three? Here, twenty-two to twenty-three, that was never submitted for bonding, correct? Okay, so, anybody wanna start the discussion?
I do. So, so, okay, so briefly. we, again, the twenty-four, twenty-five schedule that you sent down had a total debt service payment of five point four million dollars. What the budget calculation for the fiscal year according to this, which was prepared by fiscal.
Twenty-two, twenty-three budget, our revenue.
No, I'm, no, I'm talking about the twenty-four, twenty-five bond. Paving, paving, the paving.
Twenty-four, twenty-five bond, that's the bond that.
Yep, it's the total budget impact, is what I'm talking about.
That's the entire bond, and that was the.
Oh, that's the complete, is all the capital bond, that's all the capital.
Yeah, it's the to- it's the total one, the total one. So, so the, the total impact is it estimated to be two point five million? Okay, according to these, according to this budget calculation, prepared by fiscal advisors. In the, in the annual.
Our ban, yes. That's for everything.
Right, so, but the, the, according to this, the payment schedule, it's at five point four.
That's long-term, you're talking in short-term and long-term.
Right, but it still matches up another payment that we have towards our budget. That's, that's the total payment, yes, the total payment that we have towards that. So this one is saying the total budget impact for April first, twenty twenty-four to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five is at two point five million dollars.
That's the principal pay down of the ban.
Right, so I guess then my question is, if this is only at five point four, where is that one point three million dollar difference coming from?
I, I think you need to see her paper, the papers are fronting, so you can at least assess what she's trying to tell you.
So the last payment, according to, for what our budget had.
Is it this packet?
No, something different. She's talking about the complete capital.
I, I gotta go, so, I mean, I'm sorry, I.
Well, I gotta go, then we're gonna have to have another meeting then, cause I thought that this was what this whole meeting's for. I mean, I canceled, you know, myself too.
Is if Diane is available for the twentieth meeting, we can have her.
I'll take a peek at it.
So according to this, okay, here's this, that's the total, that's the total payment, okay?
That is what they're estimating, it will be, and that would be in your general fund, yes.
Yes, that's what we approved.
Short-term pay down, which is this one point four and then any interest.
Yep, so our payment?
That is the long-term, that would be the total in the debt service schedule.
For the what we pay, yes. So this is, this was what we paid last year, four point two, okay?
Yes.
So five point, so five point four, right? So if you add the two point five to that four point two, I'm up to six point seven. So according to what the payment is for this, there's a difference of one point three million dollars towards our budget for next year, according to what this is being provided to us.
Well, we would put, yeah, I mean, it goes in the budget, this is something that's done every single year.
I get that, but there's, it's still at a one point three million dollar deficit towards the payment towards that.
Okay.
Right.
It's a deficit, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's, that's why we have to, we, we are over in payment, that's.
I, I get, I get that, so that's, do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it, then it needs to reflect that payment. I mean, it's not.
Well, we haven't done the budget yet, so of course it's not enough.
But if I have my, the bond debt schedule that you gave me, at a payment of five point four, okay, and it's an, at an estimated two point five, in addition to what last year, I understand that, but they're still towards payments of what our bond debt schedule is in the budget that we pass. And there's that one point three million dollar difference.
No, not what you passed, what you're going to pass, it's not in there yet.
Right.
This is for twenty-four, twenty-five, we haven't even looked at that yet.
So is this?
I understand that, a thousand percent. It's still besides the fact that it's over the one point three of the, of the anticipated payment for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Would it be better to add what you have to borrow for next year as well into this?
Right, but then you're adding, on top of that, you're adding that two point five million dollars towards our budget for this year alone. So that's what I'm saying, like, we're borrowing for all this stuff, borrowing for paving, like, if there's money left over, like, our minimum payment, our minimum borrowing for paving was at five million dollars, and from what I'm.
No, it's not minimum borrowing.
Or minimum, minimum that we are supposed to pay. The minimum that we're supposed to pay is five million, right?
Two point five.
We're supposed to allocate.
So, like, we're over three, four million dollars on paving for this year alone.
It's the last two years.
Even if so, that's an extra two million dollars in paving, okay? And what we were told in the bu- in the budget that we passed, was that two million dollars from ARPA funding was gonna go towards that paving.
And it did here.
It did.
Four million. Okay, so then, again, how are we down?
How are we down? Um, according to the last three years, well, she's talking about is cash flow, she's not gonna see that three point something million dollars until March.
I get that, I.
So we're going to have to dip until, uh, our reserve to pay people. Now, what the, what, what the engineering department would like, okay, is a jumpstart, that's all they're telling you, asking you. They want a jumpstart for next year's budget, it's up to, listen, it's, it's okay, you guys don't wanna do it. It's a jumpstart for next year's paving projects, to get them started so we can get the bids out early when these guys are hungry.
But that's not what they're saying. They're saying that this is from the twenty-two, twenty-three's budget year.
That's the next.
That's, that's already done, work's already done, like, these people have to get paid.
They went, they went over like four million dollars in paving, this year.
Right, I understand that.
So that needs to be explained in the breakdown of, of what was spent on paving for twenty-two, twenty-three, and going into twenty-four, where's that?
She gave it to us. She gave it to all of us.
I thought you had that number nine million, was it?
Yep, um, according to last three years, guys, um, according to the numbers that Diane gave us, she gave us a whole bunch of numbers in an email.
Where's that?
Um, it was, for the last three years, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, which is this year, we spent seventeen million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand.
You're not including our.
Uh, yeah, some, some, no, I, those are expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you gotta add in the, the four million.
Now, let me go back to the, uh, revenues on the other side.
Yeah.
Now, on the revenue side of it, okay, um, according to what you gave us, we, we have with ARPA, eighteen million, seven hundred.
Correct, but you gotta remember, ARPA went from the ARPA fund into the capital fund, so that, you gotta, you gotta include that expense of ARPA in there. So you got twenty-one point eight million in paving and eighteen whatever in.
Right, and I, I, I have all the ones you gave us, and I understand you're sure.
So twen- so. Twenty-eight million dollars in paving.
In the last three years.
And ARPA, and then you go to.
Who spent twenty-eight million dollars in paving in the last three years?
No, ARPA's, ARPA's four million, it's four million.
Like, who, who did that? If it was supposed to be fifteen, who spent an extra thirteen million?
No, twenty-one.
She said twenty-eight.
Twenty-one and eighteen.
Right, I understand that, because you didn't receive the, the.
We didn't do the, any bond.
Right.
Right, so you didn't do any bond, we understand that, but that's why he put the four million dollars in twenty-three, alright, or the two million to offset any type of bonding, so we didn't have to bond in twenty-three. That's why he did it. I know you're talking about cash flow, I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, no, and I know, and I, I was not really.
I know you're privy to it, I understand.
A question, we're supposed to do five million in paving, three years is fifteen million, how do we go to twenty-eight million?
No, 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 we did five years in paving, we did seventeen million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand in five years, I only three years.
So we're two point five over?
Yes, well, whatever, fifteen million a year.
So what are we over total? What are we over total?
We're doing the change order on Thursday.
Cause that's where I guess, where, Diana, what was the total that we were over?
Uh, what is it, three, it's more than that though, stuff.
I think it.
Point four, three point five?
Yeah, I think, I think it might be also.
They're gonna get us a new change order up to date once, so.
Yeah, they're doing the change.
I get that, but we have to get this in, like, it's gotta be written down. It's gotta have a breakdown of everything.
She did a, Diane did a great breakdown, if you look at the email.
We had issues because the way Austin was collecting the bills, he was overcounting the retainage twice, so I didn't wanna send anything down and have it be emphasized.
I, I.
So right now, it's looking like four point eight million, there's five hundred and sixty thousand in the encumbrance, there's other expenses being paid differently, so.
I don't care, here's the.
Yeah, I just, it's just time, I just need a week, that's it.
Here's the, here's the problem that I have, and this is, this is here nor there. First of all, when the, when the paving, when the paving was written, and the law was passed, you could only use that paving towards road resurfacing, road reconstruction. Didn't go to curbs, it didn't go to sidewalks, okay? So, that needs to be understood, that that's separate from the actual paving plan.
And I think that's what CDBG reimburses for.
So that's what I'm saying, so I just want a total breakdown of what was spent on actual paving, not including curbs, not including sidewalks, not including anything like that. Just strictly the reconstruction and the remilling and resurfacing of roads. Because that is the only thing, according to the law, that that money could be spent on, and that five billion dollars.
That's gonna be hard for them to do.
I, Frank, but that's the law, and if the law was broken, then we have to break it down of how that, that, those expens- cause that's not the paving program, that's not. That's separate, and it's literally written in the law that if you spend any money on curb sidewalks or anything like that, that has to be separate funding.
And so, are you understand when they bid out projects, the curving and the sidewalks?
I get it, but it's gotta be separated.
They are unit prices, and he has a spreadsheet of compiled calculations that he should be able to get that. Can you just answer me what years it is?
It would have to be whatever this was, twenty-three, twenty, no, I wanna, I would have to be.
Whatever this contract is.
At this stage of the game.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Twenty-three to twenty-four.
It would be, it would have to be twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Going back, you gotta pay the piper, now they already did it.
But then it needs to understood that you can't. When we did our bond, when we did the paving program, okay, and we did the bond debt schedule for our paving ordinance, okay? The bond council gave us specific, a specific exception to the rule, that they would allow us to borrow for paving, as long as it was only reconstruction, resurfacing of roads, for that fifteen-year life expectancy, okay? If you add in curbs, sidewalks, things like that, that's no longer acceptable under that fifteen-year paving program, which violates that law, and it has to be broken down. The law was very.
Well, we've been over enough to know that you definitely spent five million on the eligibility, on what you're saying.
Right, so that's, that's another thing that I guess I was gonna go back, because where does it say the bonding for, it's, this is under that fifteen-year life expectancy too. So it's gotta be separated and it's gotta be explained, because if that, in addition, was spent on curb sidewalks and things like that, again, it's in violation of that actual law.
And so what happens? You gotta pay it in.
Somebody's gonna have to separate it, and if you gotta use ARPA funding or something like that, or borrow money, borrow money towards that, then you're gonna have to. But it's gotta be explained.
That's generally what we refer to.
Well, the state's mandating us to do the curbs, they, and the sidewalks, they have to make it handicap.
Right, but that is not the fifteen, that is not for that.
But I think she said, that comes out of the CDBG, that comes out of.
Right, so then we didn't spend fifteen, seventeen million dollars on paving, for the paving program. Does that, does that, do you understand what I'm saying?
No, not asphalt. Yeah.
So we can't, we've gotta separate that, okay? What was actually spent for the paving program, okay, and separate that from the curbs and sidewalks and everything like that. And then, once we find out that number, then the rest needs to be explained through CDBG funding and things like that.
Let me say this, it's never gonna be enough, because it's getting more and more expensive every year.
Oh, a hundred percent, a hundred percent, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
Never gonna be enough.
Joe, but you gotta have, it's gotta be explained, and it's gotta be broken down. I mean, I, I.
I get it, but I'm saying, at the end of the day, you could break down apples and oranges, at the end of the day, you gotta pay the money.
But then you need to explain that that's not the paving program, that's not. When you start spending money on curbs and sidewalks and things like that, that's not what the voters pass, at the end of the day.
But you still gotta pay.
Joe, it doesn't matter, then it needs to be explained.
We'd be borrowing more money, it's that simple, if we, if we're not gonna include the curbs.
Yeah, but how many ARPA projects have you had that haven't started?
Alright, so, so.
I can answer that, wait, how many ARPA projects have we had that haven't started yet? None that aren't under contract, four.
Which ones are those?
The water slide, the family housing and wellness center for the Veterans Development Center, where the former Y, YWCA building is. Um, the Renaissance Center, the Cornhill Impact Project.
Stuff needs to be canceled until we figure out where we're.
And that's it, that's three, because the West Side Senior Center just broke.
We gotta go all the way through it, you know, I mean, the mayor can't be Walt Disney.
The only problem with the, with canceling the water.
What does Walt Disney?
You know, these things happen, right?
The only thing, the only problem with canceling the waters.
They're supposed to make things happen.
Right, but then we don't have to borrow for it.
Hold on one second, step.
The only problem with canceling the water slide is that you've spent a hundred and thirty thousand for Weston Sampson's expenses to do this design last winter. The six hundred thou- uh, three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand for all of the physical slide parts that are physically in fabrication, and I wouldn't be surprised if they're gonna be delivered within the next month or two.
Probably be moved in the middle of the year.
That's what, I'm saying they're ready, like, we pa- we paid, there's.
I don't know, I mean, we don't know that.
I guess what I'm saying is if you canceled the slide tomorrow and you say, we're not doing it.
Out of the one point four you're gonna save.
You're spend, no, that, that, that one point four is separate.
Yeah.
You're spending, you have, not only are you wasting six hundred thousand, but now there's costs, he, Ben, in the meeting, he already ordered at least a hundred thousand dollars worth of parts for all of the.
We know we, that we, we wasted that money, that we, the mayor wasted that money.
Well, if you say no, then it'd be you.
That's the implication.
So do you spend another million to get the actual slide installed, or do you just flush eight hundred thousand down?
Or do we put an extra tax increase on, on the population next month, or next week, next year?
And not for nothing, we've actually spent, we spent almost two hundred thousand dollars just on the design and redesign of the Berlini clubhouse. I mean, there's been a lot of money spent, that, again, this is, this is the projects that the, that the administration chose to do.
On that island, that no one.
No, that was twenty grand.
Oh, well, I, I told a hundred and twenty-five thousand two weeks ago.
He's talking about the diamond in South Dakota.
Oh.
That they're putting.
How much that cost?
The traffic, I.
Hundred and forty-five thousand, you just got the paperwork in front of you.
Well, they just told us a hundred and twenty-five two weeks ago.
Look at your paperwork.
You can't tear it up, you just spent all this money. I, I think it's on videotape, God sakes, now it's different.
Right, but they're adding curbs, they're adding sidewalks, they're adding everything to it now.
I spoke to Austin, I spoke to Austin today, and he's gonna do a stop order until the council makes a decision on it.
And Frank, I gotta be honest with you, I need to know who approved that project.
The person, alright, Samantha, what actually happened with the project is, of course, uh, what's her name over here?
Celeste.
Celeste, spoke to, prior to this with the mayor and everybody else, and as Stephanie, um, told us at the last meeting, they okayed only striping, that's where the mayor was at, okay? Now, I know this for a fact, because I, I, I was with Judge Garamone, we went to the project, but let me get to the point, okay? So the project went through, Mike Mahoney had another meeting with Austin and, um, Celeste. They, they approved the project, this is what happened.
Lack of communication.
Absolutely, I agree, a hundred percent. Now, um, the reason why I know this positively that the mayor did not okay this, alright? The mayor went to this project, I called him up after Mark called me, alright? I said, what's going on, what are you doing, right? It's got curving, it's got this and that. Let me go look. The mayor asked to stop the project with Austin, okay?
And it still went out?
Wait.
The crew was halfway in.
It was, they already started doing pouring of concrete curving, okay? Now, the reason why I know this is because the guy who was pouring the concrete curving, I was with Judge Garamone, he's my witness. The mayor was already there asking to stop the project, okay? As she knows, as she's gonna tell you, once you stop a project that's contracted in, it's gonna cost you, no matter what you do, they're gonna sue you. Okay, so you're right, it may cost us money, but it's up to you to know that amount, Mark, before you make a decision, isn't it? Don't you wanna know the, the numbers?
Frank.
If you, if you have all the numbers together, cause that's what actually happened.
I get, I, and here's the problem that I have with all of us.
If we stopped the project, they were gonna pay for it, they were gonna pay for it either way.
Yeah, exactly.
How do you sit there and say that ARPA funding, okay, that the federal government gave us, is under one sole person, that's the executive branch? Okay, the executive branch allocates those funds, the executive branch does those type of things. You mean to tell me that somebody that is an employee of the administration was allowed to go and do work without approval from anybody? Because Celeste's friend was not the mayor at the time, okay? And although people might think that, but that's, that's, that's criminal, in my opinion.
Celeste, I don't know if she had, I don't know if she had the authority, but the people who had the authority were at the table, the project went through, who had the authority were at the table, the project went through, and, and just like, just like all the paving projects, Samantha, the, all those paving projects, they weren't started with Austin, they were started with Mahoney, you understand this?
I get that.
And, and, if you really went down and looked, and I wasn't totally against it, there's about seven or eight streets that were never even on the paving list, all around here, that got stopped.
For the hospital.
Huh? Okay.
Well, there's a lot more streets because of ARPA money.
Right, oh, yeah.
Okay, I mean.
There were a lot of overages, so, but what I, what I should do, for just a little advice, guys, because I won't be here, I would hold both in committee, and I would take each project at a time, and do a cost study, and know both ends, if you guys say no, that's, that's fine, but know the cost of saying no.
I think that, I think some people are gonna have to be subpoenaed, to be quite honest with you, on behalf of the council, to figure out how money was spent without the authority.
I mean, spending the money, Diane will tell you, because she first checks, she'll tell you how the money came in, she'll tell you what projects are spent, and she'll tell you what expenses were already met. So once that, once you guys get all this, all these numbers in front of you, then you can make a quality decision. Right now, you don't have enough facts to make a good qualified decision.
Well, we need to get that, where are those projects, what are they up to, the ones